Hi, I'm Leslie Hervey, interim clerk.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Michael Freeman, county board.
Thank you so much, and I'm Stephanie Summerall-Doomis, President of the Hamilton County Board of Commissions, and we have our administrator.
County Administrator Jeff Aludo.
Thank you so much. So, let's get busy. Our first item on the agenda is a COVID-19 comprehensive update.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, and good afternoon. I appreciate being here, and I also appreciate the fact that we are all able to stand and be together without masks today. And I'll share a little bit more detail about some of those changes in today's presentation.
Absolutely.
So, to get started, just with the normal slides that I shared, today we have about 4,500 active cases of COVID-19. That's down from about 1,000 from where we were just even one week ago. Our cases per day today are 74, and in 44 days, we dropped by 2,396 cases per day. So, that's that peak on January 16th to today. Once again, 2,396 less cases today than we had just 44 days ago. Really substantial. You can see, once again, I've updated this map, or I'm sharing the updated version of this map, one month apart, January 26th to the map on the right, which is just a few days ago. On February 26th, you can really see, once again, we're still seeing lots of shedding of cases within our community, which is fantastic news. Our reproductive value today is 0.79 for Hamilton County, and for the region, we are at 0.73. And as I mentioned last week, you know, as our cases kind of slowly start to get closer to a lower normal, we'll start to see that reproductive number start to go closer to 1. It doesn't mean that we're seeing an increase in the pandemic, it just kind of means things flattened out. So, I would continue to see that inch up slightly over the coming weeks. Our percent positivity for the region is at 4.2 today, and Hamilton County is sitting just about at 4.2 as well. Hospitalizations continue to be on the decline. We have 254 individuals within the hospital systems in Hamilton County. That represents about 1/10 of the patients in our systems having COVID. And for reference, back in early January, about 1 out of 3 patients had COVID in our hospitals. So, much, much relief for our hospital systems. Two other metrics there, the individuals within the intensive care unit is now down to 48, and those on ventilator is down to 42. So, also very good news and significant relief. You can see the death data here. We continue to see individuals in Hamilton County feeling the effects of COVID-19. I was sharing, actually, before the meeting, and I'll mention this, you can see the first wave of COVID is right here, the second wave, or the Delta variant, is right here, and clearly, the Omicron variant had an impact on our community. We talked a lot about it being generally less significant illness for some people, but certainly, some people just could not make it through the Omicron as well. Vaccinations, really not much change since last week. We continue to work my team into communities, out in our neighborhoods, and encourage folks to provide us opportunities to come to them. So, if a community group wants us to come, we are available to come and provide a vaccination clinic. Our teams are there to help. So, if any of you, or anyone watching today, has a recommendation, we would greatly accept it. All vaccine data you can find on testandprotectsency.com. Lots of opportunities already in our communities at Walgreens, and CVSs, and Krogers, and doctors' offices. But you can find all of that information up to date on testandprotectsency.com. So, let's talk about some of the new updates. So, this is the map that I've been sharing probably now for almost a year. This is the level of community transmission for the Centers for Disease Control. This map is still being updated and published, and is still relevant. But the recommendations, as far as masking, have gone away. You can see, I took away the red line that I used to have on the map, as well as the little masking image. Today, Hamilton County is down to 69 cases per 100,000. In the past, we'd talk about 50, being kind of that magical threshold where we take away the recommendation. And our percent positivity, as already mentioned, is at 4.13. Much of the state is actually, at this point, insubstantial, which is great news. We're really seeing a lot of relief there. This map, which was used by the CDC really since 2020 to inform layered protection strategies as we've traveled throughout this pandemic and have new tools, has become less relevant. You know, at the time, it was developed early 2020, there was not much vaccine available, there was not much treatment available, and so this was kind of that best tool. But it does not really do a good job of reflecting significant disease, and it doesn't do a good job of reflecting healthcare strain. And so, what we saw the CDC do late last week, typically on Friday at 3:30, so that we're all scrambling to get our information together over the weekend, and come back refreshed, ready to go, they rolled out this new map. And this new map is community levels by county. It's updated once a week, and they only are updating it once a week so that we don't get the noise. You know, today, we might see a spike in cases. They don't want to see this shifting every single day. They want it to be kind of smooth and even. When looking at Ohio, you can see, most of Ohio at this point is that median level of risk, including Hamilton County, once again, which is great news. So, because they're doing it and using different metrics, specifically hospital data, hospital cases, and things of that nature, this map is more relevant to what we're seeing right now with regards to what we have available as a community. So, there are three levels that you can land in. You can be a low community. When you're a low community, we are really strongly encouraging people to go out and get vaccinated. We're encouraging people to keep sick at home, and those same things that we've been really talking about this whole time. Notice, though, we are not talking about masking at this point. Individuals certainly can choose to wear a mask, but the general recommendation is that it's not necessary to control the spread of COVID-19. Then we start to get the second half of this chart, talks a lot more about hospital admissions, as well as staffing. And there's a few more metrics in the backend that are helping to inform this decision. So, today, Hamilton County, as mentioned, we are in the medium level for transmission. Butler County, Warren County, and Claremont County, our neighbors, are also in the yellow category. So, I wanted to share, then, you know, there's still a little confusion. Masks, the federal government did update their guidance for transportation, which means, technically speaking, you don't have to, per the CDC, wear a mask on a bus. However, each bus company has the right to have their own policies. So, if a company really wants to continue to have extra precautions, they certainly are able to. Further, the TSA came out and indicated that airports and major transportation hubs will continue to require masks until at least the 18th of March, which is when the date of the original order would expire. So, if you're traveling, I would really encourage you to continue to carry that mask so that you don't get caught without one in a spot where you might need one. And then, lastly, I just wanted to point out, we went through this back last year when masks were lifted. Any business certainly has the right to require a customer to come in and wear a mask. When you come to visit Hamilton County Public Health, we are not requiring masks at our offices. However, we have a clinical settings where we are serving tuberculosis patients, and so we are continuing to require masks in those clinical settings, including our vaccine clinics, just as one additional precaution for all of our patients and all of our visitors in those higher-risk settings. So, you know, I concluded, over the last two years, many press briefings with the notion that we just need to be kind. We need to know that each individual could be coming from a different spot in life. They could be taking care of a loved one who is at risk. They could be at risk themselves. So, if you see somebody wearing a mask, I would encourage politeness towards them. People will continue to wear them. It's been a big shift. This last two years has continued to be a roller coaster, and I think, you know, I think still remains some uncertainty as we move into the coming weeks and months and years. So, that is what I have for yous. Thank you very much, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Just a couple points, and you brought up most of those as it relates to Hamilton County and our building. For those that are watching, you can see our faces today. And so, we got rid of the mandate for masks within our county building. And as you were saying, if people still feel comfortable and want to wear the mask, certainly can do that. And in addition, our state of emergency expired yesterday. It was related to COVID, and because the numbers are going down so dramatically, our state of emergency ended. We did not feel like we needed to renew it, so wanted to make those comments. So, thank you so much for your information. Vice President Reese, any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you. A lot of hard work with you and so many others that really, to me, showed an example how we need to continue to work, even though the COVID numbers are down. But I think the model of how we've had partnerships across different sector, public, private, hospital, medical, non-medical, you know, business, small business, big business, everybody was working together in one accord. And I think that's something we don't want to lose as we continue to move forward. The other thing, I'm glad you mentioned about the airports, because I know that was, as people are beginning to travel, and the travel season, and spring break, and all those things will be coming up. But I wanted to also have you emphasize, as your capacity as the health commissioner, you still go out and regulate public spaces, like restaurants, et cetera. And I just want to say, one, you know, we've got a lot of restaurants that are doing it right, but there are some out there that had not been doing it right until COVID came, and all of a sudden, you know, you start seeing them cleaning with the Clorox, and they got the hand sanitizer, and everything was so clean. You know, could you maybe just talk about that, important to keep things clean, and they still will be under guidelines as your office now can kind of get back to some of those type of inspections, which was critical for this COVID, cleanliness in these public places were critical.
Yep, that's correct. Our office, even over the last two years during COVID-19, has been out inspecting restaurants, and grocery stores, and other types of facilities to ensure that they are following the Ohio Uniform Food Code. And that work will continue, and we expect really the same standard throughout this period of time. We expect restaurants to clean and sanitize at appropriate frequencies. The other really great thing, the public has a lot of opportunity to inform us of issues that they see when they're out dining. I have about 15 inspectors that do food inspections, and we have about 2,800 restaurants that we're expected to look at. And so, if somebody in the public goes into a restaurant and sees something that they would feel is not right, or not appropriate, I would encourage them to visit our website and file a complaint. Every complaint is inspected very quickly by our office, and if we find a violation, we work to quickly make that restaurant safe again. And so, our website, hcp-h.org, is accessible 24 hours a day, and we're monitoring it 24 hours a day. So, I would definitely encourage folks to let us know if they see something.
Okay. And my last question is, we have them here, machines to keep the air quality, and of course, I think we should keep that going, because there's other things. We don't want, you know, these cases to go up. People out there that have these machines, or hospitals, are we going to still be required to wear masks? What is happening with that?
So, I'll start with the first part. Any types of mitigation strategies that we have already set up in place, we should keep them around. So, if we have additional air purifiers in locations, and we can keep that air circulating better, it reduces all kinds of germs, not just COVID-19. It can help prevent the flu. And so, I would encourage folks continue to keep those options available. What I am hearing, as far as our hospital systems, they are going to, at least at the current moment in time, continue to require masks because of that clinical setting. But I think they're continuously examining the data, too, and really evaluating what's best for their population that they're serving.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Kesterman. It's good to see you. It's funny, we all dropped the mask, and we're all smiling, because we're happy to not be wearing masks right now. So, I too want to thank you for all the work you and your team have done. We don't know if we're quite through this yet. I mean, you never know, this virus has been very unpredictable. But we seem to be in a good place right now, and are very, very grateful for all the information that you have brought to our attention, so that we can make good decisions related to the county and the constituents of the county. So, really want to thank you for that. And wondering, the mask that you had on there, the Be Kind mask, is that literally a mask? Do you have that mask?
I do not have that mask. It was an image from the web.
Oh, I was going to say, I would love to see that mask, because you've been saying throughout this whole pandemic, give people grace and be kind.
That's right.
And so, I think it's been a really important message, and I think maybe we should just carry that forward as we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Kesterman will be coming every other week, unless something comes up that we need to have you come immediately. He's flexible and willing to do that. So, thank you for those updates. And can you just say what your website is again, a little slower, so people can...
Certainly. Yeah, our website is hcp-h.org, or you can call us at 513-946-7800.
Thank you. Thanks so much. So, we will move forward. Bless you. Our next item on the agenda, Women's History Month proclamation. Commissioner Dreehouse, would you like to lead the discussion on that?
Sure. Yeah, so, March is Women's History Month, and so, we want to do a proclamation related to that. As you all know, we're going to have a photo opportunity at 4 o'clock this afternoon on the courthouse steps. We have invited all of the female elected officials throughout the county, whether they're countywide officials, or mayors, or council members, in villages, or cities, or township trustees. There are well over 100 women serving in Hamilton County. I was surprised by the number. It's really quite high, and it's the most we've had in our history as a county, never mind in the countywide offices where we have many, many women serving. So, we wanted to celebrate that. So, we'll be taking a photo at 4 o'clock this afternoon. This proclamation will be available then, and we'll read it out loud then. But I thought it might be helpful to read it into the record from our meeting. So, everyone has it in front of them. It's relatively long, because there's a lot to say about Women's History Month, and we got information from the library and others, and tried to parse it down into this one proclamation. But I'm happy to bring this forward in celebration of the month. And as you can see, Madam President, you are first, and then Commissioner Reese, and then myself.
Thank you so much. And the color for March Women's Month is purple, and that's why we have it purple. So, proclamation recognizing March 2022 as Women's History Month. Whereas, women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of Hamilton County in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, women make up much of the workforce in service sectors, and are employed as frontline workers in occupations such as community, and social services, education, training, and library, healthcare practitioners, healthcare support, office and administrative support, and personal care and services, and only make .82 cents for every dollar a man makes. Whereas, the number of women is growing in additional sectors, such as business, engineering, information technology, banking, law, governance, medicine, planning and development, and others, where their influence is creating positive change.
Whereas, women have played a unique role throughout the history of our nation and Hamilton County by providing much of the volunteer labor force of the community. And whereas, women are particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in Hamilton County. And whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders in securing their own rights of suffrage and an equal opportunity, the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and peace movement, and diversity, equity, inclusion movement, in which all cases create a more fair and just society for all.
And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of women in American history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. And whereas, Hamilton County enjoys more women in elected office now, more than ever in our county's history, particularly at the county level. And whereas, Hamilton County recognizes and encourages the study, observance, and celebration of the vital role of women in American history, and as a gesture of celebration, desires to recognize Women's History Month. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the county does designate March as Women's History Month, calling upon the people of Hamilton County to observe March as Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And we hereby further proclaim Women's History Month as March 2022 in all of Hamilton County.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Women are important. Yes, woo-woo, women. Okay, I'll move on. Okay, our next item on the agenda, thank you so much for bringing that forth, too, Commissioner Dreehouse. Cincinnati Metropolitan Housing Authority update. Mr. Gregory Johnson is the CEO. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity, just to give you an update on what we're doing. I think the last update, we did Zoom, so it's nice to be in person and be able to see everybody's face. As you know, affordable housing is critical to our community overall, and what I wanted to do is just give an update on where we are from the last time that we were able to talk, and a little viewpoint of where we're going for the future. So, I talked about some new development, our billion-dollar preservation efforts, and then also, Choice Neighborhood Grant update, Connect Homes, some Envision Center, Sherwin-Williams, Family Self-Sufficiency, and just overall community impacts. I thought it would be good to give an update, not just on development, just about other things that we have partnerships with, and things that we're doing to help our residents, and then impactful things that we're doing in the community overall. So, just about a new development, we are looking forward to closing on a brand-new building of workforce housing, which would be located downtown, hopefully in the next 60 days, to break ground coming up this summer. We are looking to build in OTR 42 units of senior housing that we have planned as well, that will be closing later this summer, and then breaking ground early next year. So, between those two, we'll be bringing on and adding just shy of 100 units to our community, which we're very, very excited about working and doing. Just a few of the projects, and a couple of the Commissioners actually visited this in the middle of the project, but we're almost done with this one. This is Park Eden, $35 million redevelopment that we're doing. Horizon Hills is $3 million redevelopment we're in the middle of, and will be done in a few months. Mariana Terrace is a partnership that we actually partnered with the county on. Thank you for that, which we just closed on that a couple weeks ago, and we are starting the renovations as we speak. So, we're very, very excited about that project. It's another $18 million project. And here are our new projects that we'll be closing on this year. Riverview in San Marco are two projects, Walnut Hills, and Avondale. Maple Tower, which is in Avondale, $27 million project. Beechwood, $36 million project, which is in Avondale as well. And then, we'll be moving on later part of this year, starting to work on the redevelopment of Millville. As you know, this is the second-largest portfolio that we have in the community, and so, we're excited about this. And this will reach nearly $200 million of redevelopment of those units in that area. Wynton Terrace is the largest, and it'll be well over $200 million of redevelopment. And if you guys get my newsletter, I actually have a preview of some of the layout, or the new layout of Wynton and Finley later, to bring those two communities together, to create more positive synergy, such as a town center look. And we're looking forward to development of a football field to help with Pee-wee football for girls and boys, and soccer events, and things like that. So, for the amount of kids that are in the neighborhood. As we continue to move forward, we have the Reading President and Marquette Manor. That's another 327 units that are totaling over $117 million of preservation that we'll be doing as well throughout our portfolio, with using the public-private partnerships of 4% and partnerships with the City of Cincinnati, and of course, Hamilton County. City West is another large development that we're looking at preserving, 600 units in our co-development with Penrose, of over $200 million preservation with a 4%, portfolio, and that will go into multiple phases. And we're probably looking at about three major phases of 200 units at a time as we preserve those units. And the other thing I just wanted to mention about that project, the Housing Authority actually owns 66 lots that during that preservation, will be doing homeownership building, building out those 66 lots for homeownership, and then doing another 37 lots in our off-city west, in the west end of homeownership, for a total of just shy of 100 new single-family homes in that west end area. We're very excited about that. And then, quickly, I'll just go over to Choice Neighborhood Grant. As you know, we've been working on a planning grant with the entire community. We're about halfway there. In the next couple weeks, we'll be getting back in the room with the residents to talk about updated options and plans and things like that. We're not close to being done with the plan at all, but we're moving and making a lot of progress as we move forward with the overall plan. If you look at the big scope of the plan, we have 554 units between Stanley Row A&amp;B and Liberty Street that we definitely have to bring back, and we want to make sure that we bring all of those units back with creation of mixed income as well. So, there will be additional add of units throughout that project, or those projects, as we look at preserving maybe some of those buildings and/or new construction with those buildings as well. And these are some of the areas that we'll be looking at. And one of the things I wanted to make sure we mentioned, we are looking at putting into our plan, a plan to bring black-owned businesses there where they actually own their own land, not just the business with that. And we'll be coming back with the opportunity to ask for a partnership with Hamilton County, because there definitely is going to have to be some buy-down. But the key is, it creates the long-lasting ownership in African-American community in the west end, which I think is very important for our community. So, these are just timeframes. We submitted some drafts to HUD in December. We have another one coming up in April, and then we're looking to have our final put together somewhere in August. We're still waiting on HUD to confirm when they're going to open up the opportunity for us to apply for the grant. Since we started this process, the... Since we started this process, the amount has gone up from $35 million to $50 million that we can bring to our community. And out of that $50 million, it's not just all for bricks and mortars. It's for businesses, it's for other social events and activities that need to happen to really, really invigorate and make the neighborhood better overall. Now, just some updates on some of the other items that we're working on. We've applied and received the Connect Homes designation from HUD. And what Connect Homes is, it's about Wi-Fi and connection and lowering that digital divide. And so what we've done is take some of our money, and we've been able to actually affect over 2,300 families, individuals, with setting them up with Wi-Fi. So we separated this into a three-phase approach. Our first phase, and it's all over the city and the county, as you can see, with our first phase. And then we have our second phase that we, first and second, we completed. And now we're on our third phase that we're looking forward to having completed in April. That probably is going to be in May, because there's been some delay in materials for Cincinnati Bill, our partnership, with our partnership to do. It's only a third of the properties, but at least we got this. And we prepaid for three years for all the families to have free Wi-Fi at all of those sites during this process as well. Our Envision Center, our social services where we partner at Wynton and Finley later. And HUD learned about the partnership that we went through, and they came down and named our two centers, Envision Centers. You can see the pillars that are there, the economic, education, health, and wellness. But we started this process after going to New York and looking at a property in the Bronx, public housing in the Bronx. I could tell you, our public housing is better than the Bronx. But, and looking at a program project that they had. And so I wanted to bring that back here to Cincinnati. And so what I did was, I met with over 40 social service providers and got their agreement, and we provided them office space. And the one big thing I want to make sure that we highlight in this process, because I'm really proud of it, one of the things that they had in New York is, they actually hired residents to go out to talk to other residents to come and receive the services. And so we replicated that model, and so we have residents that we hired to talk to other residents at Wynton and Finley later to come, and they set up meetings, so social service agencies are not sitting there without anyone coming to partake in their services. As you can see, just, and so we've been doing this for a couple of years. Since the pandemic, we had to make phone calls instead of going door-to-door knocking. But as the weather gets better, the community gets healthier, we're going to go back to door-to-door. But as you can see how many contacts that we've been getting on all of the residents at Wynton and Finley later. The reason that I think that's very, very important is because sometimes it takes three times, but as you can see, people are getting four to five times contact about the connection of services. And there's a list of the agencies that we partner with for those services as well. And then here's another event that we had. We had several events, you know, during the pandemic time at Finley later and Wynton. But as you can see, during the job fair and the number of employers that we had there, the attendees, and the number of job offers, each person almost got a job offer for every vendor, from every vendor that was there. I wanted to talk about Sherwin-Williams partnership that we have. This is a huge, huge partnership that we've been able to create, where they actually come to our site and train residents on how to be professional painters, and they have the opportunity to open up their own businesses. Since we've started this, we've had 264 graduates, and several, several of our residents have been able to start businesses and also partake in some of the rehab that we're doing with all our properties. And then last but not least, our Family Self-Sufficiency Program. This is a program where there's a five-year goal. Those goals, we help residents with those goals, and then partner with community partners to partake in it. But the beauty about this is that we actually escrow money. So as a person get a job and get a better job, usually their rent will go up. This way, the rent doesn't go up, it stays the same, and we escrow the difference that it would go up into account for five years. And after that five years, the resident actually receives that to either put a down payment on a house, or pay off debt, or whatever those goals are set for them. And this is just some additional community partners. And as you can see, Cincinnati has the largest program in Ohio. We've had over 1,200 graduates and 81 homebuyers. And that's our latest homebuyer, she's pretty happy about that. And just a couple more events where we do, as far as neighborhood impact, where we do Storytime, you know, at Daddy's Day Care. The reason that I kind of mixed in this time is so you can see a variety of things, and I've only kind of given you an update on about 66% of it, but time is limited, but I wanted to make sure that I expanded the update that I was providing you today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. Your agency is awesome. I remember when I met you in 2019 and the things that you were doing and trying to get accomplished. I was just, it was just mind-blowing. And because you talk about this agency under your leadership is not just bricks and mortar, it's so much more than that. And so that's why when you were, and I bring it up all the time, when you were planning on leaving, I was reading about, I said, "No, no, he can't leave," and you decided to stay here because you had started so many things, and I'm so glad that you stayed here. The Envision Center, I did take a tour of that, I remember that, and that's also very effective. As you were saying, you've always, from the time I've known you, had resident input. You don't want to just put something there and not have the residents say what they want, and you've always done that from talking with you. And then you talk about the digital divide. I mean, you could easily just come in and talk about the units, which is outstanding. You talk about small businesses and the fact that they should be able to own the land, that's monumental. Just homeownership itself. And then have, I'm telling you everything you told us, but it needs to be said, and the fact that social services is involved, you look at the whole person, not you, because you have lots of staff, that's not, probably not as much as you need, but, and the numbers during COVID were just outstanding. And I've told you this before, that I've heard that the number is 40,000 affordable housing units that we actually need, that people are needing. And I have told you before, I think, single-handedly, CMHA may get that done themselves, and that's just being sarcastic, but you guys are moving, you're going to the areas that need you, you're not waiting, you're moving forward expeditiously but strategically. And so I was looking at the funding, and I know HUD gives you a lot of the funding, but where else do you receive funding for?
Actually, that's it. So we're, you know, on this preservation, on this billion-dollar journey, we've reached about $114 million so far in the preservation that we've done. And so what we've done is been very creative with using 4% bonds, applying for 9% tax credits, money, home dollars from the county as well to help gap filler, and then we've been doing FHA and conventional loans. Really, what the long picture for us is reimagining affordable housing in Hamilton County. And I put in your folders just a couple of things, and I have that there as one of the headings. But the other part that's in that folder is the financial or the economic impact that the agency is making on the community overall, which are some very, very, I would say, impactful numbers on the return on the investment when you partner with Cincinnati Metropolitan Housing Authority. I'm looking forward to getting larger partnerships, because we have more units in the county that I haven't talked about yet, that we need to preserve those units as well. And we're going to need assistance on gap fillers. But going after the 4% has been really helpful for us. And really, what we are able to use is the transition from a public housing conventional platform to a Rad platform, which is more on the lines of a Housing Choice Voucher-based platform, which it allows for a little more money and a little bit more flexibility on money that you can borrow. So our, how we're approaching this is a true public-private partnership, but then also changing the platform of where we're standing out of conventional public housing to reimagining affordable housing in our community while making it better, while impacting the economic side, while improving our MBE, WBE, and Section III numbers while we're doing all that. So my hair was not this color when I started.
And as I open up, which was not on the PowerPoint, the first thing I opened is Free Painter Training Course, which was in the PowerPoint. So you're, it goes back to you're trying to give individuals skills so they can, I mean, quote, "The American dream is to try to have your own home if you can," but to try to take care of your family on your own. So you're building the person also, and you talk about vouchers. And I remember calling you when we had homeless young ladies out on the street, and you said, "Well, I have housing vouchers." And so you worked with, not sure what other agency, to try to get those young, you said, "And they don't have to pay the money back." And so you were just so open for that, and I certainly appreciate that. So at that point, I will open it up for Vice President Reese, if you have any questions or comments.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and I also join in thanking you for the work that you have done and continue to do. Just add a couple of components. I think the first thing, one of the things that we kind of sometimes miss or gloss over, you are basically one of the larger developers of affordable housing before affordable housing was the title of the month or the year. You were talking about the affordable housing crisis before it came to this level of a major crisis. So I think that's very important. You talk about the number of people that you employ. You employ 200 people, also contributing to the economy. And with that, CMHA in your package says the largest landlord in Hamilton County, providing homes to approximately 10,000 individuals with 5,300 units. Then you go on to talk about the capital funds and operating funds for this. As we are moving forward, and I know we've got a group and we're looking at affordable housing, what's best to put our, where to put our money. I think last year, when you made the presentation, the thought was making sure that you were at the table, and I understand you are at the table, but also understanding that you understand this market very, very well, and have had to have creative financing and do things a little different in that area. So I'm hoping that we are building on some of the things that you have done, instead of us, you know, recreating that will.
Yeah, I think that's very important. I think the way to look at the Housing Authority is, when we recreate it, we recreate it really to create jobs. Housing was the second thought about it. And so the spirit of that is, how do we continue to create jobs and have the return to the economy, the local economy, and then make sure we're preserving existing units while we're developing new units? But in the mix of that is, what kind of jobs are we creating, and who's getting these jobs, and how much do these jobs pay? Because a little bit in there is also about the affordable housing crisis, but we also have a pay wage crisis. And they go hand in hand. So if everything is going up, as we all know it is, so wages have to go up, and where, when are those wages going up? Where are they going up? And what kind of jobs do people have at different levels of average median income? So I think we have to think about that holistically, because the thing about build them and they will come, that won't happen, I don't think, in Hamilton County. I think you have to do it tastefully, you have to understand what people want, and I think you have to begin by asking them what that is, and then making it successful. Part of what that Envision Center was, I took two months and just had resident meetings and just took notes on what they said before I started to talk about, so I didn't say what they needed or what they wanted, I let them tell me. Sometimes they were, they talked a lot, sometime they didn't, but we got a lot of information. And I think we have to do that with this affordable housing piece. I think, we've been talking, so we talked about how we were going to do this, we listened to experts. But we have to make sure that people that we're trying to help, we're listening to them as well, because we could be developing something that they're like, "I don't want that," or "I don't need that," and there's the disconnect. So I think we got to make sure we do that final piece, once we get everything set. And then being mindful about jobs, being mindful and being deliberate. One of the things that I've been doing since I've been here is, I'm deliberate about who is working with us. I have to go through procurement, but I have to make sure that opportunity is there for everybody to get it. In that packet, it shows you the numbers that we've been able to create. If I'm talking about $114 million of development that I've already done, the big question is, who got those dollars? Who got those dollars? Because it's a return on our community. It's a return when people get jobs. It's not just fixing up the units. Now people have a different experience, now they know a little more, now they can buy insurance for their staff, now that it can expand their staff. So now you're talking about community impact. And that is what I've been screaming and trying to say, is CMHA has the opportunity to give you community impact if you use the tool that we have. One of the things that we do, we do construction, we don't have, we pay pilot, we don't pay taxes. So if you have a project that just needs a little bit more gap funding, and it can't borrow anymore to put any more stress on it, if you partner with CMHA, you have a waterfall so you can borrow more, because then you're going to be paying pilot, and then you can borrow a little bit more money. And then you say, "Well, how does that impact the overall community and taxes?" It impacts it greatly, because each project is $20 million project. Now you're talking about giving people wages of $30 an hour, or giving a business that had a $50 annual, now they're going to come out with $100,000 annual and also hire two more people that didn't have a job. Those are the type of things that, big scale, we have the opportunity to do, especially, you know, as you're talking about spending your affordable money, and I got off on a tangent, I apologize for that, but you can see.
Yeah, you're fine, yeah. We've had that, we've had these conversations, so you know, I support that thought pattern in terms of making sure that when we do something, the impact and the dollar turns three times before it leaves Hamilton County. And that's the, we got to be very intentional about that. And your job fair and our partnership we had with Jobs and Family Services, where we bought the 513 relief bus out there, they really worked. When you talk about the people getting the jobs, because soon as I pulled up and walked in, a gentleman came out screaming, "I got the job, I got the job." And several others got jobs that day, too. And so absolutely right about these partnerships.
And we're having another one, it's in your bucket, too, so I want to make sure we put that on your website. We're having another one in April.
Awesome. I wanted to get back, though, to this one part, I think is very important, when you talk about the jobs and affordability, because sometimes it's a stigma. And I think this is very important, because there are people who are working every day, and every day it's becoming less and less affordable for folks to be able to live and be able to have a house and... and be able to have a house and roof over their head and pay their bills, and people don't understand that. You have on here the top five jobs in Sisay region that do not pay enough to afford housing. You indicate that $55,000 minimum income needed to afford the median home with a mortgage. So you have registered nurse, $50,600, that's lower than the $55,000 needed. You've got retail persons, people in the retail industry making about $22,180, that's less than the $55,000 needed for homeownership. You have labor or material mover, around $23,900. You have food service worker at $16,550 average. And then you have customer service representative about $27,800, which is less than the range you need for the homeownership. So I do agree that we've gotta tie the work, the job, the labor market with, you know, what does it take, what do you have to make in Hamilton County to be able to afford, you know, be able to afford to own a home, et cetera? And then my last thing, I will just say on here, your presentation about land ownership, of small business, African-American owned businesses, land ownership. And that's a piece I know that we talked about, something I'm really pushing because what happened in the West End where my grandmother was at 1082 Lynn Street. The reason these things can happen, it's different from a renter coming to the table versus a person who owned the land. And that's one of the things that I'm really pushing here because not just in this instance, but in everything that we do. I just had a conversation last night about this. People say, "Oh, well, you know, can't we do our, you know, even though we're pushing inclusion, 10%, 50%?" But if you don't own the land, that's why people are running the megaverse and all that to get land, because land is not being recreated. So if they begin to be landowners, then when development comes, you have to sit down with the landowner. But if you're a renter, which I'm very worried about, a lot of African-American businesses are starting, and it's great, but they're renting. So if the landlord goes up in the rent, and I said this to another developer, 3CDC, at the time I'm concerned, not just with them, but that we have all these African-American businesses and they're renting. And if at some point the rent goes up, or it's not, it's not cool anymore, it's not trending anymore to help minority and African-American businesses, they don't have any ownership. And I learned that at a young age when my parents left downtown business for over 12 years, renting and went out and got a commercial building where they actually owned. And I learned at a very young age the difference between owning commercial property and renting because the rent just kept going up. They got them in on low rent because they were trying to help minority businesses. But soon as they got in there and started doing well, they come in, you can't do well because they come in and say, "We gonna go up on your rent." And they were downtown. So I do like the, I'm very interested to hear more at some point about the land ownership component that will increase African-American businesses owning the property and the commercial property and being, them being the landlord at some point.
I think that, I think that's one of the things that we have to be intentional about. Right now, as you said, we're intentional about affordable housing. Where it's, it's, it's a hot topic, and we're being intentional about it. I think that we have to be intentional about how do we buy down and make that process work? Because that is true wealth building. When you're owning the land, you own the building, and if somebody wants to come in now, you can sell for profit if you wish, or you don't have to. So I think we have to be intentional. And part of what I wanted to do, if, once we get that, and as part of the Choice Grant, is to come back to the county and ask for a partnership to help with that buy down so then that mortgage will fit into those, of those business owners' normal wheelhouse. And then that way, when something, or if something else happens, they're talking about the bridge expansion, we're excited about that, but the highway is gonna have to be widened. So it, I think what we're talking about now is very important for short-term and long-term success of businesses that we're intentionally trying to help.
Thank you, just a couple of comments from what you had just mentioned. Intentional is extremely important. This board has been intentional in allocating 40 million for affordable housing. And the key is to be very strategic on how that happens. So it certainly is a priority, priority of ours, you know that. And so that's why we put our money where our mouths were, so. But I also wanted to mention, you talked about, there's a Free Painter Training Course. The next class is April the 18th through the 22nd. It's a one-week course. There are some requirements, I see one of the requirements is that you have to be a CMHA resident, but there are Housing Choice Voucher Holder, RAD Resident, or Section III Resident, and complete a basic interview for admission. And it's from 8:00 to 4:30. So for those that are listening, April the 18th through the 22nd, you can contact Gina Stewart at 513-977-5681. And in addition, there's also another hiring event on Friday, April the 22nd, from 1:00 to 4:00. Many companies are looking for you, it says. So if you're interested, you can also contact Gina Stewart at 513-977-5681.
Commissioner Dryhouse?
Thank you, thank you Greg for being here this afternoon. I've got a couple of questions, and you were just talking about a kind of a rent-to-own scenario where we create wealth by property ownership, not so much rental. The Port Authority just bought a lot of properties. And the idea is to have the folks that are living there right now, who are renting from them, eventually be able to own those properties. And so I don't know if I heard you talk about that during your presentation, but do you have a model, or are you even allowed under the HUD, you know, parameters to start to think about rent-to-own scenarios when it comes to some of your residential properties, especially the townhomes that you have so many of?
You are, it's, it's not a rent-to-own. If you, for, for, long story short, if you have a home or houses, which we do have, where you have a resident in the house and you can allow that resident to purchase the home, but you have to go through a lengthy process with HUD, and it's not a rent-to-own. HUD used to have specific rent-to-own projects where they had that. Actually, I am a product of one. That today, my mom still lives in this, in that same house that she owns. And so it's a great program. But they don't have those as many, so they, they used to be called Turnkey. But for your, if someone lives in a, one of our public housing properties and it's in a portfolio that the Housing Authority is saying, "Hey, we want to try to phase out," we have the ability to sell those homes to the resident that is in that property. As far as the, the process that the port is going, we actually have voucher holders that are in some of those properties currently. So what we're doing is trying to work it out where those voucher holders, when the time is right, are able to purchase their homes. And you're, you can with a voucher, with voucher help, purchase a home. So it could be that as the person, as the units are being updated, person is working on their processes, that FSS program I was talking about, that's exactly what it's designed to do. So if it's on a three-year or a five-year, which some of those properties are, to turn them all over, then it would be perfect for some of those voucher holders, if they wish, to get in the program, start working on credit, to build the escrow. And then at the end of the day, if they're still on the program, the voucher could help pay up to 10 years, a portion of their mortgage, and it works just like we pay a landlord for rent. And then grow themselves off of the program and become homeowners all at once.
So the, the program that you just referred to, the, the escrow is accumulated, and then the home buyer, it's a different house, right? It's not where they're living, or is it?
It's up to them. It's totally up to them.
Okay, so they could purchase the home in which they're living?
Correct.
With that escrow money? Okay, yeah, that's, I misunderstood you, thank you, that's helpful.
Most of the time, they're on a voucher program and they're in an apartment, so they wanna move. But yeah, they, but in the public housing program, yeah, they could, they could make that.
Okay, okay, great. Couple other things. You also, you've talked about workforce housing and low-income housing, and I'm wondering if there's, what the distinction, if there is a distinction there? Because you're in the business of providing low-income housing opportunities. Are you referring to workforce as also low-income?
It's low to moderate. So it is both. You have people that work three jobs and they're still low-income. They're still, they work three jobs and they could be part-time jobs, but they still are below the poverty line. Those are the jobs that they can work, those are the jobs that maybe they know how to do. So you still have that as well. When I'm saying workforce housing, it's workforce housing, but the key is to make sure that it's mixed-income housing. So you're mixing incomes with 0 to 30, 30 to 60, 60 to 80, 80 and above. Having someone or groups of individuals with the same financial background, I think we all know in our community and across the country, that doesn't work. So the key is to make sure, and that's the whole thing about reimagining affordable housing. So with the workforce housing that I was speaking of, it'll have all of that in it, where there's a market rate, a person that's paying market, a person that works one job that could be making $60,000 but has a four-family that needs a little boost, they'll be getting help. And then a person that could be handicapped but still has a job and works, and then they'll be getting the help. And then everybody's, it's a mixed income, so everybody's helping each other out for the financial makeup of the building. And that is the big vision, and I think that is the positive community impact that, having that vision that we can have on our community overall. Making sure that as we preserving, as we're bringing back, we're not taking away what we're creating is mixed-income developments and what's healthier, I believe, for everybody.
Yeah, no, and I, I agree with you, that's the West End model, right? Is having mixed income.
That's the reimagining CMHA, that's the model that we're, we're moving to all across.
Okay. And I guess the key is not to reduce the opportunities for low-income housing, which we know is a great need here, okay? And lastly, you mentioned something about Wi-Fi, something that all, we've been very interested in, we've set aside quite a significant amount of money from our American Rescue Plan dollars to address Wi-Fi issues in the county. When you introduced Wi-Fi into some of your buildings, did you do it, you know, individual resident by individual resident? Or did you do something that was like building by building, where you provided access throughout the whole building and you guys kind of managed that? Or was it something that each resident had to manage on their own?
No, we, we did it, building by building. So we looked at the dollars that we had, what the cost was, and then our cost included prepaying. So we had to lock in a price with our partner for three years so we can prepay that price and it won't go up, because we wanted to pay all that at, at once. So once we're done with the phase, that's paid for any resident that comes, that lives there or new resident that comes for three years. And then the other back end of that is our partner's supposed to be working on grants so we can further that for residents and it doesn't drop off for three years. So we looked at the cost of putting that into particular buildings, how many adults, kids, all of those things that we had in these buildings. And then what we wanted to do is to make sure that we had a county impact and a city impact, and what was gonna be the biggest bang for our buck. So we kind of looked at it that way, but it is building by building, not by, by, by resident.
And how many buildings did you do?
I don't know the exact number of buildings, but I know it's over 2,300 residents are affected, affected. And the unit count is somewhere over 1,000 units, so a third of what we, we have out there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Now, we could use a partnership.
Well, no, that's what I'm thinking, I mean, you were at the table, right? You're at the table for so much of this.
We could definitely.
Yeah, and we're looking for models that work, right? Yeah, thank you.
And thank you so much for really clarifying when we talk about the West End model versus the CMHA model and whether or not mixed income is part of the West End model. And I kind of differ that it, that it is at this point, but hopefully we'll get better with that as we build more down here. But obviously, your model is moving toward that mixed income. And then in addition, I wanted to bring up. I'll, I'll leave that alone, so. Oh, okay, so I thank you so much.
I got another question. Before you leave, can you talk about the voucher situation? Where are we now? I know that there are some landlords that, even though we have rental assistance and all of that, have kind of moved because of the marketplace. They can get more rent, they can get, how is that affecting us? Where are we at with vouchers? Are we in a voucher crisis? And if not, because I know I got calls from people looking for housing, where, where are we at with that?
Yeah, the pandemic has exasperated the search part of this. So, and, and encroachment, meaning that people usually are in a higher bracket, bracket or renting on the higher market, have come down because of the pandemic and renting and encroaching and making it harder for our families that are using that voucher out there to actually find a place. Just to give you an example, our market, our per-unit costs, meaning what we average helping a resident, hadn't moved in about seven years. As soon as the pandemic hit until today, it's moved over $100. We used to be at $525, we're at $645 a month now. So we were roughly a $75 million program, now we're an $80 million program. And then when you look at the sheer numbers of how many people are you helping more people, or are you just paying more to help people, we're paying more to help people. And so today, because I look at this every day, we have 10,558 people that are actually on the program today, is how many we have. We are, we can issue up to 11,600, but we don't have the funding because of the increase in the cost. So we're spending the money that's coming in, but it's the increase in costs. But we're doing two things to try to help the residents. We're hosting landlord events where we're inviting landlords in to ma, to try to match with, help residents to find units. We have a partnership with Talbert House, because we have specialty homeless vouchers, that they're actually helping individuals that are homeless go out and navigate the systems to find units for, for them. And then we have a partnership with Kevin Finn's organization, which he has a lot of umbrella organizations under him, that that homeless sector gets referral and vouchers. We started that as a, just a small project of 25, now we're up to 1,000. And then we have a partnership with CPS for kids that they recognize are homeless that come to CPS, and then they're helping them, and then we are giving them a preference of 100 vouchers. So we're starting with 100 vouchers there. So with some of those partnerships, it's helping individuals. But now today, out of all those numbers, routinely, we mostly have about 400 people month-to-month out looking for a voucher. Right now, it's about 1,000 people. So it's almost three times the number that we normally would have just because it's taken longer for families to find housing with the voucher. We're extending their search time, it's usually 90 days. We're going out to 120 days, and really, we're giving them as much time as they, as long as they're communicating with us in a timely fashion to, to find housing because we understand that, the difficulties of it. And then on the market piece, affordability piece, we have to apply to HUD, but we've applied to HUD to allow us to pay to increase so then our voucher holders are more competitive in the marketplace. More than 50% of the market. competitive in the marketplace, fit more than fifty percent of the market, um, to, to help us and we're expecting to get work back from HUD any day now to allow us to increase that. So with the landlord meetings of trying to match, and when I left here today, we had a line, uh, of people waiting, uh, waiting on the landlords because it started at one o'clock, um, today. Um, and then the increase of the fifty percent match, uh, and the help of our Talbot House partner, uh, we are seeing people being successful, but, um, we, we, we definitely want to see more people being successful with the voucher. And those are the things that we're doing to try to help them be successful with it.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood. Was it, we don't have enough houses that will accept vouchers? I know you got your part about the people need the vouchers and the, um, amount of people getting vouchers with the cost, but I guess the side that I'm hearing is that there's, uh, you know, family need a house or need a place, people not accepting. Is it less people accepting vouchers or not? I just wanted to make sure that wasn't the case.
It is, and it's a combination. It's a combination of that, but I don't want, I don't want anybody to think that that's the only combination. We all are habits or creatures of where we're comfortable. So the market is being flooded for where voucher holders are comfortable, if that makes sense. It's that thing about you have to ask them what is and why, and then you have to look at where do they feel comfortable living? And then if that's the area they feel comfortable living, how can we increase the landlord market in those particular areas? Is that, you see, even? So it's, it's a combination of all those and I know that's the one that, well, everybody says, oh, yes, that does happen. Don't get me wrong, I don't want anybody to throw anything at me. That does happen. But at the end of the day, there's a combination because people are going to live where school, church, right? And they have support systems and that's where they would like to live.
Thank you. And lastly, um, I am going to ask real quick, you talked about Port Authority and the homes that they had purchased and your relationship with. So do you have a standing relationship with the Port Authority? Do they, how is that relationship just very?
Yeah, actually, I'm, I'm attending the meeting that they're having tomorrow.
Okay.
And, and so, yeah, no, we have a good working relationship with the, uh, Port Authority. Uh, the, one of the things that I keep asking to present to the city and to you guys to keep you updated, but I want to impress on, like I said, and I said it before and I'll get the opportunity, I'll say it again. The tool that we are, if we could all learn what, how to effectively use it, we could really help our community out a long, long way. So, um, but so, yeah, we, 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 uh, we're going to use our partnership, as I was explaining, the voucher system to help some of those individuals purchase some of those homes, uh, as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was not the only, um, partnership that you had, that it's a standing relationship with the board.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, we, we look at different ways to see if we can gather property, purchase property.
That's awesome. We got to work together.
Yeah.
So, thanks. Thank you for coming. Okay, we'll move on to item number, uh, four and five. We have, uh, two, two executive sessions. Um, I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section one-twenty-one point twenty-two G-one-one to consider the appointment or employment of a public employee. And then item five is also executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code one-twenty-one point twenty-two G-one-one to consider employment dismissal, discipline, or compensation of a public employee.
Second. Commissioner Summeradumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.